Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you all for coming this morning. It's great to see people out on kind of a sloppy frosty morning. I just have a reminder to have everyone silence their cell phones. The meeting documents are available for review down on the end next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Craig and Carol are here if you need a listening device. That takes us to our routine business. First item is I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from January 15th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in several seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,808,869.10.
Here's the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second, are there any comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is reports, there are none. Item five are personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Carrie. You're here to speak about a special personnel action to approve the hire of Jason Gierman. We have two for you today. The first, as you mentioned, is a special personnel action or personnel action to approve the hire of Jason Gierman as the Sheriff's Office Director of Emergency Management on a variable hour basis at 3681 an hour effective on the 28th. The reason this is an exception is usually we would have a break in service between a full-time to a part-time service, but we're asking for your approval this morning given the circumstances of the situation. Questions for Carrie?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next one I have for you is a special personnel action to approve a resolution to create a new position of Senior Deputy State's Attorney for the State's Attorney's Office, which will be assigned to legal matters in the Highway Department. This is the item that Donna Kelly briefed you on last Tuesday that would allow us to hire an attorney specifically for those HR or highway-related issues. Are there any questions for Carrie?
Get approved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank goodness they'll be located at the Highway Department, otherwise they'd have to be in the fourth floor.
I think we're looking at bathroom space maybe or something. Okay, the next item is abatement, there are none. Item seven, notice and requests. There is a notice for the South Dakota Health Department of Disinterment Permit issued for the remains of Lori Christensen. They're for your review. Item eight is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lean, there are none. And that takes us to an opportunity for public comment. I believe we have at least one person here for public comment this morning. If you just want to come forward and introduce yourself, John, that'd be great.
Yeah, John Parker with the Minnehaw Conservation District, excuse me. And I do have a PowerPoint if we can get to it here, if we find the right one. There we go. So, just first off, the Conservation District, if you're not aware, is housed up on East Benson in the Department of Ag Building. We've been partially shut down for the last month, so we work with NRCS, so we've been funded. We've been able to be there. FSA and Rural Development has been spotty at most and everything, so. Let's see here, to move on, what do you got, a down arrow? Okay, so, a little quick history. Conservation District's been around since 1941. Our services include producer, landowner, bare root tree sales, shelter belt design, wildlife screening, farmstead, grass drill rental, native grass, mowing, soil sampling. We provide a newsletter to the concert through, I want to say, the county. It does not reach everybody. We do mailing through the post office and usually goes out about the end of this week, first part of next week, and then one again in the fall. So, and we've got the Dewey-Gevick Learning Area out on the west side of the county by Wall Lake there. That is a big area that you guys at one time funded lots of money into that to get it developed 25 years ago or whatever, so. Some of the partners we work with, you guys, Minnehaw County, East DeCorota Rural Water, NRCS, Soil Health Coalition, Isaac Walton League, the Bird Club, other various community clubs, City of Sioux Falls, ag producers, commercial residential landowners. Educational involvement, FFA land judging annually. We get a producer in the county that allows us to go out and dig some soil pits and stuff on their land. And then the area students that come in, about 200, is a large group, but usually it's between 150 to 200. And then they spend before noon there judging soils to get them prepared for the future judging contests this coming spring that they held down in Kansas. So, see how far we can go here. Okay, Ag Pavilion Day is in March. 500-plus people, could be up to a couple thousand that show up there depending on other events throughout the state, and that's held every March. The Sioux Empire Water Festival, that's another educational outreach that we do in March. It's held at USF, and we reach between 2,000 and 2,400 students, fourth graders, for two days. If any of you are interested, you can look it up. It's on the West Sioux Water Empire Water Festivals on the website, or March 13th and 14th, if you don't have anything to do, you can come and visit. So, we'll find you, give you a tour around with the kids. And then we do various school presentations. I don't know if I got this thing on a time thing or what. Then we do other school presentations throughout the county. And local groups that we work with, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, 4-H, YMCA, Lafe Erickson's, Master Gardeners, Bird Club, FFA.
Tricia's not moving for him.
Yeah, I can't get it to bones. Maybe we can just go on to the... So, the Dewey-Gevick site is out there on the west side, is open 365. We have approximately about 2,500 people use it during the year, and it's open to the general public with no fees or anything. You can go out there and use the parking lot. This past year, we've had a few issues mainly because of the high water. It's caused some runoff from the neighbors, and those have been addressed and going to be worked on this spring and finished taking care of them. So, hopefully everything will be back to normal out there. If the water goes down, it'll be really normal, but it's pushing the edges of the boundaries. And Zoo Day, that's in April. That's held at the zoo in town here. Okay, so, in the past with the Conservation District, if you're not aware, or if you are, you know, it's been around since '41, but in the past 25 years, we've gone from doing 100 acres of trees a year to 1,000 acres of grass, down to 500 acres. That's kind of what we normally did, and I would say when I first started in 2008, we were still in that category, so 10 years ago. So, present, we are down to, this is what we do in about the average year of the 58 acres, work with GF&amp;P, 250 acres of grass. We have various rental drills, the farmers still use that, soil sampling, and commercial work. And as far as commercial work goes, we work with the city and any contractors, and we are a subsidy of the state, so we can work with private, public, or government contracts. So, there. And this is kind of what the future's looking like. Instead of the big acres, everything's kind of getting whittled down. The 2,000 to 3,000 acres of ag seeding is being pushed to the edges with the farm bill and the commodity prices. And I'll cover a couple slides and talk about a couple things that we're doing with cover crops and everything there, so. The Big Sioux Water Project, which is, works with the city and East Dakota Water, Rural Water, and NRCS, mainly to put a buffer and clean up Skunk Creek and the Big Sioux. So, and Friends of the Big Sioux is another big promoter for us. So, if you've heard about that stuff in there, we're involved in that. And we're the, I want to say, layman terms, we're the front people for it. They run everything through us, but they work for their own little identity groups, Speaking of cover crops, those are blowing soil, sand, and we were in the hills for the last week, or since last Wednesday, came back yesterday. And driving across the state, a lot of road ditches and snowdrifts and stuff are brown because they don't have field cover and it's drifted and blown off. This year was a picture of here is a picture of a cover crop that was grown in a little, I think the tray was 12 by 8 and four and a half inches deep. We put this dirt in there, that's potting soil, and that grew that much in about 10 days. So, and when I was talking about the cover crops, the drills and stuff that we use, the farmers are starting to use this more, and there's various ones, and that could be a whole nother two-day talk if we wanted to get into it, so. But we are getting some results and people are working on that. This is a cover crop field that Stouts just was the renter. They had rye on that, they took the rye off, put in a cover crop of clover. Otherwise, if they didn't, this would be bare ground, so, on this producer here. And so, we're getting more and more of that, and if the farm bill supports it, we'll have more because the farmers can get a one-time subsidy cost and pull in with that. So, with that, I thank you guys for your support. I know every year we send you guys in our budget and stuff. Thank you guys and everything, so if you've got any questions, I'll field them now or we'll pass them on.
Commissioner Bar.
So, John, right now with the partial shutdown, there's issues for farmers that want to do CRP and wetland authentication or whatever. What's the, what's the normal process to, are people, is this the time of year when people are trying to do their CRP?
Yes, yeah. Now is when the farmers have the downtime and landowners, not just strictly farmers, but the landowners. Now is when they have a little downtime and they can come to the office, fill out their paperwork, and get signed up for the programs for the next year, the following year after that, because some of them are on one- and two-year rotations. And being as FSA is the lead division, the farmer has to come in and sign initially with them, then get passed over to the NRCS, and then when NRCS gets the contract done, then if there's work to be done and they want the Conservation District to do it, then they come to us after that. But in the meantime, now with the shutdown, there hasn't been anybody on FSA's side to initiate anything. They have brought in three people, I think it was two days last week and today, to sign contracts and loans, so the guys can get their money. Because some of the guys and farmers that have been coming in, they need, they can't get it because they have to be signed and authorized, do all the paperwork, so they can't get it. So, they've had to come in for a couple days to get everything patched with them, so.
Just another point. So, John, another thing, you know, when we, in the county level, approve a CAFO, a lot of times there are landscaping issues there. Do you guys help with trees and stuff like that on those projects?
Yes, we do. In fact, on the CAFOs and anything like an ag waste system, anything like that too, is we'll, we'll help the producer, we'll do the plan for them and set it up. And then if they're working with, through them, or if they're working with NRCS or have a private landscaper or somebody that's, we'll work with them on the grass seed and the seeding and get all that stuff in place too, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Heiburger?
Thanks, John, for coming and doing a presentation for us. Just with the Emerl Ash Board becoming a really big issue, and Sioux Falls has got plans for how they're going to handle this stuff, has the, has your organization at all put together a plan for farmers? Because I think a lot of those shelter belts have rows of ash trees in them. I know I have many rows of ash trees in my shelter belts, and so have they put together any kind of plan and what they might be replacing trees with, or how they are going to go about dealing with it?
Yeah, in fact, we have. We've worked, the State Conservation Association is where close with John Wall at the SDSU, but in turn that's passed down to the other districts in the state. But for Minnehaw purpose, we have a lot in that's, was found here in town. And we do have various plans of, and ideas. We, we will implement the planting process, we will not implement the removal.
Right.
But we can give you names of people to call and get involved with that, to get that done. But, yeah, and then we have replacement trees. And in the newsletter coming out and on our website, there should be, by the end of the week, there should be some more information on that for what you can do, what trees to replace, the ones if you take them out or cut them down and remove them, so.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you so much for coming this morning.
Thank you guys.
We appreciate it. Okay, that takes us to regular business. Item 10 is to authorize the Chair to approve professional service agreement for final design with Ulteq Engineers for our Highway 111 Safety Improvement. DJ Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This project is a little bit unique compared to a lot of the other reconstruction projects that we, that we generally do. We approach project selection and justification a little bit different than we used to. That's because of MAP 21, which was an act that was passed by Congress in 2012. And MAP 21 changed the justification process for safety-driven projects. If you've ever heard at a public meeting, somebody say, or anybody that's kind of complaining about a dangerous intersection, how many people have to die before something is done? That really used to be the rules. That was one of the justifications or warrants for safety-driven projects, which is, is kind of sad to think that way. Nowadays, we can correlate severe crashes on certain types of roadway geometrics to intersections that haven't necessarily had those kinds of problems yet, and, and we can justify projects based off of those roadway geometrics being a problem. A good example is like a horizontal curve. We know that horizontal curves can be dangerous, and so we do certain safety improvements before we have a pattern of dangerous accidents and crashes. So, this project specifically, there's a crest of a hill that's just a couple hundred feet north of, of a township road intersection. You can kind of see in that picture that it kind of goes off in the, off in the horizon there. There could be a car, I think 250 feet north of that intersection, traveling at 55 miles per hour, and you wouldn't be able to see it before entering into that intersection. And so, because of MAP 21, we're able to look at the, this type of intersection, what we call a K-value, which measures a vertical curve curvature. And we know that, that curve is way too close to that intersection to be safe at, at driving what the, what the speed limit is. We also know that changing the speed, speed limit doesn't necessarily slow people down. People will drive what they feel comfortable, and, and our warrants for changing the speed limit don't necessarily take into consideration the K-value of, of a roadway curvature. And so, we've looked at this for several years. We've kind of kicked the can down, down the road, and, and we've decided to put other projects in front of this one. But now we feel that it's time to move forward with this project. We've got the budget available in 2019 to begin designing and hopefully reconstructing this, this curve and this intersection. And Ulteq Engineers was selected to do the design for us. The design fee is, for preliminary design and final design, is $50,556.60. We've got the agreement attached to the packet, and I would consider any questions that you have about the project.
Commissioner Karski?
DJ, you and I discussed this one a little bit yesterday. Called you up. This is a short road. I mean, it's probably a mile and a quarter long in its entirety from Highway 42 to where it ends at the Iowa border. I don't want to go against, you know, safety, or don't want to ever think about, you know, loss of life because of inaction, but when I look at the length of this road and the, the traffic counts, and it's going to cost 50,000 plus for design, what's it going to cost for construction? What do we have for land acquisition? It just seems to me that there could be a better way economically to address the concerns that we have on this road. What, what are we looking at for total?
I think we're looking at about $300,000 for construction costs for this project. $300,000, and then probably another $30,000 or so for construction administration for the, for the consultant to oversee the construction process.
Okay.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm kind of the same play as Commissioner Karski is, and I looked at this the other day. I thought this just doesn't, I don't know that I agree completely. You know, I've driven plenty of roads and everyone has. Some places they have flashing lights. I've been, there's a hill in Iowa that I frequent that is similar to this, and it's two busy highways that intersect. One's got stop signs, the other one does not, so it'd be similar to this, and they have a flashing light there, and you know you need to slow down, but what even, I mean, put a flashing light there so that you can see it before you cross the hill? Also, rumble strips on that road coming up on the other side, and I'm not talking one, make a great big huge long stretch, it'll scare the heck out of you. You hit those rumble strips, you'll slow down. Change the speed limit? I would think there's a lot of things we could try that would slow the, the traffic down as opposed to spending $400,000 on this project to take the hill down. So, just, I would appreciate your comments on my comments.
We certainly have a list of, of speed reduction tools that we, that we can put out there. A couple years ago, we did put up some extra signage and put up a, say, a speed warrant, a speed warning sign based off of the warrants for the K-value of the curvature. And we haven't seen a reduction in speed. We still continue to receive complaints from the people that live in that area. And so, that was, that was primarily the reason that we decided that we wanted to move forward with the reconstruction project.
And what about putting a whole bunch of strips across the road that would slow you down?
We could do that. We, we get a lot of complaints when we do that. There's two houses right there, and so that, I mean, they're, they're pretty noisy. And so, that noise and, and along with a lot of the traffic that uses this is at weird times because it's a lot of casino traffic. They're cutting down to the highway that goes right over to the casino.
It'd slow them down.
And so, it would certainly slow them down. I, I think we would have some concern with the neighbors right there.
Any other questions?
Manager. So, DJ, it's, I've driven this road during my wandering around the county, and I don't recall it as being hazardous, but I can certainly see it, and it reminds me of Dr. Bean on Six Mile Road or where, whatever it is. But what about the $50,000 for the, the engineering firm? It seems, you know, how did we make that selection? Did, is, is that the best we could do for that project, the best price?
We actually, we solicited proposals from two different consulting firms, and, and we use a qualifications-based process for professional services selection. And, and the price is certainly in consideration, but it's, it's not the governing factor. And, and I will say that the price that they're giving us for these services are, are very competitive. They're, they're reasonable.
Commissioner Karski?
I haven't had time to drive this road, at least not specifically as it relates to this. And the Google car hasn't been down the road, so I couldn't go down the road on Google Earth and look at it either. So, I'd like the opportunity to at least go out here and take a look and see what we're talking about spending 350, $400,000 on. Would delaying this for a week impact your bid letting or anything like that?
It, it would probably impact the bid letting, but the, the schedule that we have for this project is certainly not time-sensitive at this juncture, and so I would definitely welcome that and allow for some additional conversation. One thing that we haven't considered approaching the commission with, and maybe you want to think about over the next week, is this is a two-mile-long stretch of road, and it's one mile away from County Highway 109, which does go from the south border of Minnehaw County up near the northern border of Minnehaw County. And I think that the reason that this road was originally paved is because it is right along Rowena. But removing the pavement on this roadway would certainly be a reasonable outcome of, of this process and, and moving the traffic from this section of roadway over one mile to 109.
That thought, that thought crossed my mind too, but I didn't want to sound like anti-progress by taking out a paved road, but, yeah, so, and I know most of our county roads are art-paved. So, yeah, one week, two weeks, I'm open to a discussion, but I'd, I'd like to defer this so I have the opportunity to go out and look at this, so.
I'd make a motion to defer action for two weeks.
I'll second that.
So, motion in a second, any comments, concerns?
I just would say I think that it'll give Dean a chance to, you know, I think there's a Hops growing operation just in that mile further, just pointing that out. They're open on Saturday.
Any further comments? If not, we have a motion in a second to defer for two weeks. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, DJ. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, item 11, is to authorize the Chair to sign an agreement for other post-employment benefit actuarial services with Silverstone Group. Auditor Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And every five years, the Department of Legislative Audit requires us to do an actuarial of our OPEB nets, other post-employment benefits, the liabilities on there. And 2013 was the last time we had this performed. Originally, the contract was estimated to be at $6,000, but I got to talking with Silverstone a little bit, and they agreed to a $5,000 cap back in 2013, and they've also agreed to that cap again this year, five years later. We're hoping there may be some efficiencies since the framework is in place, and they'll just have to replace the numbers, but that remains to be seen. Human Resources has completed the data request, and now the contract is needed to facilitate the actuarial. So, the action I'm seeking, I'm seeking today is to have the chairperson sign the contract so the actuarial can be performed in time for our annual report. Any questions?
Commissioner Karski?
What are our post-employment benefits that we offer?
Well, right now, it, it affects between five and 10 employees, and they are basically benefits that the county extends to people who are recently retired. And, you know, I'm not prepared to dive deep into the numbers, and I would also caution that, I think that if you want to get into this a little bit further, it may be better if we have an executive session to address that.
I think Carrie has a comment or two?
To answer your question, it's a health insurance benefit. Retirees who've been with the county for at least 20 years and been on the health plan for a period of time and are eligible for immediate receipt of retirement benefits have the option to take out health insurance until age 65. So, they're just trying to measure that actuarial value of providing that benefit.
So, it's, it's the health insurance?
It's the health insurance, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Bennega?
I would just agree that this is a legislative audit requirement, and we really have no control over that, or will be written up in the annual report and the audit on not completing that. So, we do need to do that, unfortunately.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Takes us to item 12. Consider a motion to adopt a resolution to accept a revised tax payment plan. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a revised resolution from 2014, which authorized a payment plan for the retreat at Pointer's Ridge on back taxes that were totaling $12,768.46. The retreat made payments as scheduled. They've met their obligations 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2018. The resolution that you passed in 2014 stated that the quarterly payments would rise to $1,000. And the retreat is requesting the commission to consider a revised payment schedule of $400 to $500 per quarter, and that the final payoff date would move of four to five hundred dollars per quarter, and that the final payoff date would move from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. Included in your packets for today was a letter from Deb Klebenhoff, who is president and CEO of the retreat, and Deb is here today if you have any questions, along with a proposed resolution and a relus- resolution that was passed in two thousand fourteen. In two thousand fourteen, the commission was not able to consider Ms. Klebenhoff's request to waive the penalty and fee, as there is no provision in South Dakota law, to waive the penalty and interest if the county is going to reconvey that property back to the former record, the former owner of record, and that has not changed. So I would stand by to answer any questions, and I know Ms. Klebenhoff is here to answer any questions you may have also.
Any questions for Carol? Commissioner Benega?
I don't have any questions. I think, uh, I would be in favor of, um, approving her request. We do the same thing, generally speaking, on DPN on olds for people, uh, that are, uh, retiring their property tax debt, if you will. So, uh, I would, uh, support that confirmation of those dollar amounts.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Like she said, Deb is here, and I, I appreciate all that you have done, you know, trying to put this property back together. I was actually hoping there would be pictures attached, just, oh, great. Maybe we could, maybe we could see the pictures after the meeting or something, but, um, yeah, I, or, or maybe Carol could even put them up. I just, I appreciate what she's done to, to an area that was, um, in huge disrepair. She could, she could actually put them up on the, on the screen for us, maybe even, um, or, or if they're small. You decide, Carol. But, um, and because of the law, we can't help out any more than we already are as the taxes go to not only the county, but they go to the school districts and the townships and, and the cities, and so, um, we can't, we can't cut her taxes, but we can at least extend hot, the, the timeframe of, of repayment. And so appreciate all she's done. She's been very diligent in, um, trying to make this work. So I would support it, too.
Oh, there we go.
There you go. Not upside down. Yep, there's some beforeers.
Deb, do you want to come up?
Yeah, I was going to say, come up and just point out what you've done. That would be great.
We're on TV. We have to speak to the microphone.
If you'd identify yourself too, Deb.
I'm Deb Klebenhoff, and I, I haven't been here for a few years, so I think that's a good thing. There's some new com- commission members. But, so, I, I don't know if any of you have been out. I know some of you have been out there, but when we got the property, it was, you know, it was completely overgrown, four-foot volunteer trees and thistles and everything covered with graffiti, misspelled, which is always the thing that bothers me the most. But, so this is our entry drive, and now we have a nice sculpture garden. I'm working with Darwin Wolf to actually get sculpture there next year. Here's the cabin row. I actually have another picture where you can't even see the cabins. It was so overgrown. And, they're small, but this is only a picture of the propane tank, and I only stick it in because when we got there, there was one flower, one iris, and you couldn't see the propane tank, and now there's iris everywhere. Let's see. Here's the main hall, the kitchen. You can kind of see me standing there in disgust. Mice lived there alone for many years. And here's the hall itself. And that little picture doesn't show up quite. The floor is black with dirt and, ugh.
It was nasty.
Here you can see the floor a little better in one of the bathrooms, the men's bathroom, and the women's bathroom. How would you like to use that nasty thing? So here's the A-frame, which, outside and inside, I had someone say, "You should not go in that building. It's not safe to breathe in there." It was so stinky. It had those fake ladybugs, about a quarter inch thick, all through it, and I was just like, oh, it was gross. And also, we scored a, the E.O. mural that used to be on the old horse barn, and so now it's on the side of A-frame, to which he said, "I love the peoples in Sioux Falls." My favorite graffiti. Whoop, backwards. I, I thought we would name a cabin that one. We got them cleaned up, but I, I haven't. I, I just like it. Anyway, now it's, and now it's, we call it the rustic cabin. And it's kind of dark, but they're carpeted, and we put in new windows and doors and air conditioning. There's a little space heater in there. Nothing is winterized, um, because mostly because of the plumbing, and we learned it takes four hundred dollars worth of propane to keep that main hall warm for one week. So, yeah, no. You can't, you can, you can go down there now, but it's cold. And here's the writer's cabin, the first one we did, so kind of shows what a little drywall. And we just get literally hundreds of volunteers. We get stuff. Money is always hard to come by, but we get volunteers and things and just fix it up as we can. So we have two cabins done. And here's the fire pit, which, yeah, that's where you see the snakes sometimes. But we, we got it cleaned up, and we've had some big raging roaring fires down there. One of the best nights was spooky poetry a couple of years ago, where poets were reading seriously some disturbing stuff they'd written. And as, as the night went on, a full moon rose up over the trees behind the fire pit, and it was, I thought, "You can't do this anywhere in Sioux Falls. This is the only place." So, and the last thing was, according to the, uh, what do you call it? Stuff I had to do when I got the property, that piece of paper, one was getting rid of this pool. I'm not sure why. It was really nice. We had a lot of frogs and things that grew in there, but you all didn't like it, so it's nice lawn now. Might build it, something pretty there this year, so. Those are pictures, just some.
All right, well, thank you. You certainly have done a lot of work. It's good to see all that progress. So I didn't hear any objection, but I didn't think, I, I don't think I have a motion either.
I would make a motion to approve the, uh, action that she requested.
Second.
So I just want to clarify what the motion is. The motion is the motion to, um, approve the reduction in the quarterly payments?
It's the, um, yeah, it's in the schedule of, um, the property tax payment proposal of January, a payment of four hundred dollars, April of four fifty, October, until paid in full, five hundred dollars per quarter to be, uh, paid for in two thousand twenty-two, I think was the estimate.
Okay, so it's the resolution that was presented along with this?
Yep, sorry.
That's the pending resolution, MC fourteen fifty-four. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, I believe. Roll call vote.
Bard?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
I would just add, Commissioner, Chairperson, that just for people who may be listening, this is the old former J.C. camp that was abandoned or left at one point south of Baltic. So if people are wondering where this retreat is at, they may be more familiar with it as the former J.C. camp.
Okay, thank you.
And additionally, I'd say four hundred bucks in the hand is better than four hundred bucks in the woods.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to item thirteen, which is to consider a motion to approve jail expansion change order number three. Carol?
Commissioners Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you is change order number three for the jail. I think everybody knows that we are, uh, building a jail expansion, and the following change orders total three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy cents. This is change order number three. We've been lumping them together. So you had change order number one, which was actually a deduct of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. The second change order was one hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. That means that change orders in total equal two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and ninety-one cents. And, uh, just for clarification, there's, uh, five percent, two million dollars that we set aside for change orders, that are set aside for, um, the county's change orders. So that's where this amount comes out of. It's not additional to what we'd already planned on, on spending. In summary on this, five of those are, have no financial impact. One of them is a deduct, and eleven range from five thousand dollars to one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Does the commission wish, wish me to go through and just highlight each of them?
I think you could highlight the, the couple of more significant ones.
Sure.
And then if people have other questions, they can ask you.
Sure. I will go to change order zero, zero, one, three, which is, uh, the storm tech for a hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. One of the things that we want to do is be a good neighbor with water runoff. And, uh, we recognize that that can be issues, and this is a collection system that will be underground and, uh, will slow the water as it moves through the system towards the Sioux River, and it also has, provides for some cleaning of the water also. All good things to go through and do. So that is change order zero, zero, one, three. We have, uh, one change order for twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. This is zero, zero, one, nine. And, uh, um, city code wants us to put in two vents in each drain in each of the cells versus the one, so we're doing that one. Most of the zero changes happen to be related to windows, and I'm looking for the one that's a hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars, which is zero, zero, two, six. This one actually has come before you, um, in the past, uh, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. In the course of doing this, uh, one of the, the biggest challenge out there is underground. That used to be a street. Dakota Avenue used to go through there. There's a lot of utilities that happened to go through there. And one of the things that was discovered or recognized as we go through this is that all the water that is collected from out in our administrative parking lot, uh, which is where I'm pointing towards, the people on TV don't know where I'm pointing to exactly, but that's that parking lot on Minnesota Avenue. That area through there all went underneath that area, underneath where the new jail is going through, and it needed to be rerouted. Originally, we thought it was going to be a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. There was some rock that was found, so it required a little bit more work. I will tell you that Tegra has thoroughly vetted this number. It's probably the most well-researched number that they could, uh, have ever done in any of our change orders. So that was the next biggest number that we had.
Are there any questions for Carol about any of these items? Commissioner Benega?
I just have one quick question, Carol. On the, uh, internet copy, we had, the second change order was for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand?
Yes, and I, that was an incorrect number. The printed copy you have in front of you today is correct.
So the printed one is correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Pardon?
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second? Commissioner Bard?
I'd like to comment that, uh, some of this was not foreseen, uh, during the design process, and so, uh, but it was expected that there would be unforeseen things, and that's, uh, why we have the contingency fund. And, uh, like the stormwater runoff thing, uh, the city asked us to do this. We are not increasing the, uh, impermeable surface that, uh, is, uh, in our project. There was a roof. It was a parking lot. It was all running off. However, those of us that have been here through storms, I've seen those ma- uh, utility hole lids, which weigh hundreds of pounds, popped off, uh, during a, a, a heavy rain. And, uh, this will store underground, uh, the, the first splurge of water that comes and then trickle it out. Uh, there's a couple others in our community already functioning, and, uh, should be good.
Okay, anything else?
I would.
Oh, Commissioner Benega?
I'm sorry. I would just say that, uh, out of the total project, the change order total of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, almost two hundred and thirty thousand, is less than one-tenth of one percent. So obviously, you guys have done a great job at, uh, controlling the construction costs along with the professionals, so thank you.
And I just would say that, um, you know, I mean, I think we do feel pretty good about where we are. We're just about out of the ground, which is where most of the, um, the risk comes until at the end for a jail project, when you have all the, um, mechanical and security issues. But I, I do really want to just thank, um, Carol, and particularly, uh, Tegra has been really very helpful, um, in these draw requests and the change orders, and, um, has spent a lot of time, um, kind of working the numbers over. So, um, I think we really are reaping the benefits of having put together a good team, so. All right, I have a motion and a second. I have a roll call vote.
Heiburger? Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Yes.
Bard?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us-
I'm sure I just want to say that you really have been a great leader in this, uh, project as well. Meeting after meeting, uh, you've battled through, uh, with your usual smile, and I really appreciate your, your-
Well, it's, it has been a good team effort, so everybody has, uh, pitched in, and it's greatly appreciated, and you need a smile when you learn some of these things. So, okay, the next item is item fourteen, legislative update. Craig Dewey.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Uh, bill traffic has still been relatively light at the legislature, although rumor on the street is that, uh, with the unlimited bill submission deadline at the end of this week, uh, there could be another four to five hundred bills, uh, that could drop during the session. So we will see, uh, how that unfolds, uh, as of, uh, next week. Uh, the governor is scheduled to deliver her budget address tomorrow on Wednesday to a joint, uh, session of the legislature. And, uh, information that has been reported in the media indicates the budget should be, uh, very similar to the budget that Governor Dugard proposed as he was leaving office in, uh, twenty eighteen. And, uh, legislative update here. As you can see, only one additional bill, uh, was added, House Bill ten forty-eight. Uh, I would, uh, be happy to answer any other questions. Otherwise, uh, I would be ready to move on to, uh, some follow-up, uh, information that you had asked, uh, me to collect last week.
Are there any questions about the bills that Craig highlights? If not, I think he could go on to the, the additional information you have for us.
All right. Uh, last week, uh, we discussed a, a potential piece of legislation that would, uh, allow a penalty of fifty dollars a day to be assessed by the county for zoning ordinance violation. And, uh, a few of the questions that, uh, you had asked are, uh, why was the bill repealed back in nineteen eighty-two when that took place, and how will it be enforced? Uh, after some additional digging, uh, through the Legislative Research Council's website, as well as, uh, some of the state archives and assistance from, uh, Maggie Gillespie in the state's attorney's office, uh, we are unable to find records of why the legislation was repealed back in nineteen eighty-two. That was prior to the time when, uh, audio recordings were taken of different committee meetings. I would, uh, again, I give credit to Maggie Gillespie for, uh, doing some research as far as, uh, determining how, uh, enforcement currently takes place, and I would defer to you, Maggie.
Well, Madam Chair, um, I guess if the question is enforcement of your ordinance, uh, you have two avenues, uh, through state law to enforce your ordinance. Uh, you can enforce your ordinance through an injunction, uh, which is a civil action that, uh, the state's attorney's office would pursue with your, uh, consent and direction. And the purpose of that would be to stop a prohibited behavior under your ordinance. Uh, so that's allowed under Title VII, eighteen A, your state, uh, law, or, excuse me, your state chapter on ordinances and resolutions. And then, uh, the state's attorney's office could initiate a criminal action, uh, class-two misdemeanor punishable by a, a five hundred dollar fine, up to thirty days in the county jail or both. Um, the state's attorney's office could initiate that, um, and would consult with the board because the criminal conduct, uh, under that scenario for violation of your county ordinance would be under your county ordinance rather than state statute. And so the state's attorney's office could initiate that measure. So you'd have the injunction, a civil action, uh, to pursue against someone violating your county ordinance. And you'd have the, uh, class-two misdemeanor criminal charge that you could pursue to stop a violation of your county ordinance.
Commissioner Heiburger?
So we, those are already in place, so really adding an additional fifty dollar fine, I think is just piling on more that isn't necessary, and then it's a state legislate- state legislative issue and not a county ordinance. And I would assume if we wanted to add a county ordinance of a fifty dollar fine a week, we could do that, couldn't we, Maggie?
Well, um, I don't-
Not saying I want to. I'm just saying I think we could.
Sure. Um, the counties gain their, uh, authority by, uh, statute. So whatever the legislature says you can do is what you can do. And so there would need to be a provision in state statute that says that you can levy a daily penalty as part of an injunction. So that would be under the injunction avenue, uh, the civil avenue, because the criminal penalty is already provided for in statute.
Okay. So we maybe can't add an extra fifty dollars, but we already have, we already have a pathway to, to tighten the screws, if you want, on somebody who is not obeying our ordinances.
So, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
The remedy for the injunction would be, uh, to stop the behavior, and potentially the court could probably, uh, impose whatever costs the county would incur in that injunction matter, not attorney's fees, but any costs that the county could incur, you know? So, for example, in the form of perhaps rest- for example, in the form of perhaps restitution. And that remedy would be available too, under a criminal penalty.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, you know, being on planning and zoning, it's incredibly frustrating to have to go a year before we can enforce it. And I think that the idea of a criminal thing, we got enough meth dealers and stuff that we don't need to take planning and zoning people to a criminal proceeding. I, I am happy that Senator Steinhauer is considering this and I, I hope that it passes. And again, we don't have to impose it, but it would give us a tool additionally. And Commissioner Heiburger is correct, we do have these other outlets. But as I said to the sheriff as to regards this last problem that we had, if, if the guy was growing pot, we'd shut him down today. And maybe I should have thrown some seeds over the fence there. But the, the fact is that it shouldn't have to go on for month after month after month. I was getting calls from the chamber people, the city of Hartford, the neighbors, and basically, this, this person was thumbing his nose at us, just like he previously did to the Lincoln County people. He has an injunction against them, or they have an injunction against him down there. And now we have an injunction against him here. And he's going to Union County next. We, we need to have more tools to stop this rogue operation.
Commissioner Karski?
Appreciate your work on this, Commissioner, and also Representative Steinhauer, but who writes the ticket? Our planning director? I mean, who?
We would. And you know, again, it would be our option and certainly, we wouldn't impose it, pardon me, Madam Chair.
That's fine.
We wouldn't do it right away. But you know, we'd say after sixty days, if you haven't stopped your operation, we're going to start charging.
So that discretion lies with?
I would say it would be with the planning director or with, with us. Obviously, the planning director has, you know, charges other, other issues like, and, and people can appeal them to us and then have it reduced or sustained.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Craig, one of the questions I had last week was, who is going to be responsible to follow through with this for the collection? And, and is there going to end up with a warrant on this? Is this an arrestable offense? I mean, where, how far does this go down the road if somebody says, well, I'm not paying fifty dollars a day? And is it going to end up still being a state's attorney's issue that they have to, that it's got to go through the court system anyway and then it involves the sheriff? And it just, how much does this snowball? So that was one of my questions last week.
And in response to that question, I would refer to Maggie Gillespie's comment about how there are two remedies to resolve a scenario like that. One would be the injunctive action and the other, if I'm stating correctly, Maggie, would be a class-two misdemeanor that would exist in statute. Either way, you would certainly see action being taken by the state's attorney for staff time. And then if there would be criminal charges filed, the appropriate bodies would be responding to that as well.
So I can ask a clarification question?
Absolutely.
So we already have that existing and so we already use that particular avenue. All this would do is add another fifty-dollar fine per day on top of what we already have.
I think she's looking at you, Maggie.
I'm sorry. I was looking at Craig.
I was looking at both of you.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Well, it sounds to me like the question is that the flavor of the penalty is a civil penalty, is how it sounds to me, because you wouldn't be able to add an additional criminal penalty to the class-two misdemeanor. So it sounds to me that it's in the flavor of a civil penalty. And so if you could, if you could restate your question for me, because I want to make sure I answer it this time.
So the, the things that you explained before were already in state statutes. So if we, if we, if this passed and we decided as a county to impose this fifty-dollar fine and the person says, I'm not going to pay it, it still ends up coming back and using the exact same, what is available to us to try to recoup it. But I'm just saying it's more state's attorney's time. We already have all this stuff in place to already, we wouldn't probably have the fifty-dollar penalty, but we already have all the other penalty or whatever available to us. And so we're just like, I'm sorry, we're like piling on another thing that brings one more job to you, one more job to the sheriff, one more job to everybody who's involved in this system. Does that make sense?
Madam Chair, so it, yes, it sounds to me that the question is, is whether a civil penalty should be authorized in statute. And it would be, I guess the question would be whether or not this board is, finds that to be something that would, would be beneficial under the civil injunction action for the court to be able to assess a fifty-dollar-a-day penalty in conjunction with that injunction action.
Okay. Thanks, Maggie.
I would just point out that certainly, if we were to repeal all of our planning ordinances, there would be no concern.
I anticipated that this would be an interesting discussion and it has been. You know, I think ultimately, what we're trying to decide here is whether, as a commission, we want to authorize Craig to utilize his valuable time to work on behalf of this bill. I certainly understand the frustration that Commissioner Barth is, is enunciating about, you know, that it does feel like we have limited opportunity to expeditiously address a violation of our ordinance. And, but to use your own analogy, this adding the fines really doesn't allow us to shut down the operation or address the operation any quicker. The hope would be that somebody who's not motivated by an injunction against them would be motivated by a fifty-dollar-a-day fine, which honestly, I just think, given human nature, the kind of people who are not motivated by the threat of criminal action or by injunction are not going to be overly motivated by a fifty-dollar-a-day fine, is kind of what I think. You know, at this point, I'd be open to some ideas. It seems like there is enough concern yet about this bill. I certainly don't want to discourage Wayne Steinhauer, because I appreciate any, anybody in peer who's willing to try to help address an issue that the county has.
Madam Chair, I, I certainly don't think we necessarily need Craig to go after this. I think Senator Steinhauer, who is a longtime chair of the Planning Commission, understands it well and with, you know, the legislators and their wisdom will come up with an idea that, that will work. So I, I don't think we need Craig to be carrying the flag up this hill.
Is there anybody who feels differently about that? All right. If not, I think that is your marching orders, but certainly, we do appreciate Wayne's efforts on our behalf. And, and I would anticipate that if he called and asked you questions, you would certainly provide any support he needed, but that you just won't actively be working up in peer on, on behalf of this bill.
Thank you for that direction.
Okay. All right. So that takes us to item fifteen. And we have Carrie Benz and Jill Franken here to give us an update on a NACO stepping up meeting that they attended in Des Moines. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Carrie Benz, Human Services Office. I'm joined this morning with Jill Franken from our City Health Department. And Jill is going to join me in sharing with you information that we were able to glean from attending the stepping up peer initiative exchange in Polk County in Des Moines back in November. And the stepping up initiative, it really emphasized the finding data-driven solutions that would assist us in reducing the number of individuals in our jail. And just as a real short recap, that stepping up initiative is actually a national initiative that the county commission, that you all made resolution to support in twenty fifteen. And since that time, we've embraced that and have moved forward and has real, that really has been supported and demonstrated through the development of the Triage Center concept. Why the stepping up initiative is so important to you, to us as a community? One, it saves money. And if you know me, I don't often like to say it saves money, but rather, it really does realign our funds to best invest in programming. That really addresses issues and provides the support that our community members need in order to function, to do well, and to get connected to the supportive services that they need. Two, it saves lives. Not only are we getting to those that are in need of services, but we're getting them assessed correctly. We're doing so, we're doing so more quickly. And we're able to connect them to the services that they desperately need rather than them walking through a number of services and finding out only that they really don't match to those services. And then they're referred elsewhere. So it just seems like they're jumping through hoops that shouldn't be necessary. And as you'll remember, we did our SIMs, our sequential intercept mapping, when we were developing our Triage Center concept. And it really focuses on getting to those individuals, getting to those in need at that intercept zero and one. So at the very beginning of that process, what can we do as preventative measures, rather than waiting until people get involved with services well down into the twos, threes, and fours of an intercept, when they now have consumed a number of services that, A, they really didn't need and B, are quite costly. And then three, it creates a safer community. And by that, I mean that it's really twofold. The criminal justice system can empower our city and officers to have alternatives at that intercept zero-one-one, rather than taking everyone to jail and having people spend much of their time in jail, which we all know is costly. And two, we then have a thorough and well-administered assessment tool that can better address and establish what treatment those individuals need should they get to jail. There may be some alternatives then that the criminal justice system can pursue in order to best link them to their care. So the key measures that we talked about and that were presented us, presented to us in Polk County, there were four measures. The first one was reducing the number of people in jail with mental health issues. Key measure two was reducing their length of stay. Three was increasing connections to treatment. And four, reducing recidivism. All easy tasks, right? So I'm going to turn it over to Jill, and she's going to share with you the topics that we discussed and that were presented to us that addressed those four key measures.
Well, good morning. Jill Franken, Public Health Director with the city of Sioux Falls. And I thank you for the opportunity to participate in this, in this training. It was really educational for me and I appreciate that. It's great to be able to learn some new concepts. And oftentimes, I was leaning over to Carrie saying, I feel like we're doing some of that or I feel like I know that we are engaged in conversations around these topics. And so it was very validating to know what we are doing is in line with some of the best practice nationally. So kudos to the county for that and thank you again for the opportunity. One of the areas that I'll talk a little bit about that we really found was informative was taking a site visit to the psych urgent care facility at Broadlawn's Hospital. It's a county-owned and operated hospital. And the work that they do at Broadlawn's really, under their mobile crisis, as well as their psych urgent care, I think was really informative. Now, the mobile crisis team was part of what Broadlawn's does, but it's also much more than that. And really, when you think about it, it's a lot of what we have with our mobile crisis team. I sat in on Southeastern Behavioral Health's presentation, I think might have been just last week, because I wanted to hear firsthand some of the things that they were going to be reporting on to all of you. And what we have is very similar. However, I would say they have a very focused group, that that's really their sole job. They don't just come in as they're called, but they really have FTE in a multidisciplinary way focused on that, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. So if they're not responding to a crisis in the community, they are actually doing work to help really identify opportunities with those individuals that they've worked with to help meet their needs. They have an interesting system called Smart one, one, Smart nine-one-one that was intriguing to both Carrie and I. And this is a system, a technology solution to allow individuals and families to log into the system and pre-input information about their health or anything they would like first responders to know. So for example, if someone is dealing with some type of a chronic illness in any way, they can put that information in. And so when nine-one-one's called, the dispatchers already have that information about them, which we thought was really interesting. And in this world of mental health, if you're able to have some of that information that they have chosen to put in there available, just imagine how that can help sort of set the stage for what first responders are going to be dealing with and what they need to know, like medications they may be on, et cetera. So that was, those were just a couple of things that we were shared as far as things that are happening in Polk County. Then psych urgent care was another piece that was of great interest to myself, but also to both of us. And it was just a really great example of what types of mental health services could be available in our Triage Center as we continue to design that and move that towards an operational opportunity in our community. Psych urgent care is really that way for people to be able to access medical care for things like if they're not doing well on their psych medications, maybe for one reason or another they weren't taking their medications and were having some psych, psychosis or issues with that. It's a place where they or their family members or someone can bring them. And it could be up to twenty-three hours that they're able to stay there and get some stabilization, get the professional help that they need, and then be able to get them either referred into additional care or be able to get them positioned back out into the community. But it's just, it was a great, real example that we were able to see how they operate that, very much like a clinic. It really didn't look like much different than maybe if you were going to Falls Community Health, for example. But they had this, this also opportunity for people to be able to actually stay there for a period of time to be monitored, make sure they're doing okay, and get them further where they need to go. It also, you know, and I think I said the, up to twenty-three hours, and I'm pretty sure that was right, because I think I double-checked, that was what I, the number I knew about in double-checking on their website this morning, but their average length of stay for those individuals was eight hours. So it isn't something where they're there for a really tremendously long period of time, but it can be really impactful time period that they can be, have intervention with medical professionals that really know how to meet their specific needs. You know, and the one thing that I would say is, in, in every area that we start understanding how to bring in the right people to be able to part of the complement, one thing Carrie asked that I really share is that, you know, they wanted to make sure that it was a safe place for people to come. And so one of the things they really took a look at is what type of security do they need to have? It's not just safe for the people that are, you know, working there, but also just safe for the people that are needing to be served. And so that is something that they added as an element as well to their, to their complement of staff and support is that level. And it's not really dissimilar to what we've done at Falls Community Health. We have, we have a security officer that works with us as well, but he's part of our team. And so he's not really that heavy hand of law enforcement, if you will, but really has learned how to actually interface with our patients, help them as well as help the staff when needed. So I think that was something very important. So the other piece that I'll talk about a little bit is just in the area of reducing recidivism. And one of the things I just want to convey that was very informing to me was the seriousness with which they took looking at social determinants and identifying what are the areas that they want to really impact for people around being in community? How do they, or how are they successful in community? How are they successfully housed? How are they promoting their physical health? And then also, how are they making sure that they can be optimally employed? So those were the kind of core four they talked about, when they talked about ways that they were really kind of looking at reducing recidivism. And it really aligns up with what Carrie said earlier, but then I remember Commissioner Karski, you were talking last week about, you know, the things that are really important and that is that we really look at how we can, you know, reduce costs, but also save lives and be able to have an impact in our community. So they really want to minimize jail days, they want to minimize emergency department visits, and minimize inpatient hospitalizations as much as possible to be able to have those community housing, physical health, and employment opportunities available for people to be successful in community. They talked a lot about higher quality of life, as you can imagine. They talked a lot about higher quality of life, as you can imagine, since that Core Four really would be part of that. And they want to make sure that individuals have meaningful life roles. So you can see it was really talking about some of those soft things around, you know, but are, that are really values that they wanted to subscribe to that really do fit in with the trending and evidence around social determinants. Some of my takeaways, I guess, is basically two things, and that is, how much of this, like I referred to earlier, how much of this already is part of our community, part in some way in our community, or is being very seriously discussed in our community? And that was very encouraging to me. As someone who's sort of a newcomer into this area and this body of work and learning more and more all the time, it was really great to see that correlation around a county that is really considered really best practice and how we are aligning ourselves with best practice. And how it lines up so well with the triage center and the things that we're trying to accomplish in that area. So those were the two takeaways I have mostly for you, and I will turn it back over to Carrie.
Do you have any questions for Jill before we let her run away? Commissioner Benega?
Jill, I just question about, excuse me, the Core Four. Did they identify when they get through the system, so to speak, and they've spent eight to 23 hours there, which of those four core areas that they think are the most important? Or are all of them ranked the same?
Well, as far as the psych urgent care, because I would say that the reducing recidivism is really across all of their, how they look collectively at all of their programs and how they want to make sure that their programs are really aligning with their Core Four. I would say probably from the core, I would say their physical health is probably the most important from a psych urgent care perspective, making sure that they have their physical health needs met, because it's really kind of that basic of what you need in order to be able to manage the rest of those components, to be successful in community, to be successful in your housing opportunities, and to be successful with employment. So that physical health would probably, from a psych urgent care perspective and mobile crisis, be that really important factor there.
Did they, if I may, did they give you a list of services that they refer people to based on those core scores, if you will?
Well, actually, and I think Carrie's going to talk a little bit more about some of the things that we learned and some of the areas. But we really, I mean, I've got a folder that's really thick, and it's got a lot of information. So yes, there was maybe not a list per se, but we certainly could, you know, identify that for you of what were some of the type of services and how did they align up with the Core Four? That would certainly be something we could, you know, accomplish for you, so.
I think that would be interesting.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Carrie. Thank you.
All right. I'll hurry up and do some summaries. Really, our, our takeaway is when we left, I will say it was really, well, Jill's delightful to travel with besides, but it was really enjoyable for us to go. And I think Jill and I would both say that it, it made a lot of sense for us to go together because we obviously, in human services and in community health, they really are joined at the hip. And so it really made a whole lot of sense, and we actually learned a lot from each other, as well as where our interests lie. So our takeaway is some of the main things were the coordinating council. They started their coordinating council in January of 2017. So they're quite new to the game and openly admitted that they have a lot of growing to do. But they were very open to the public. They encouraged the public's involvement, which we thought was outstanding. And they really did talk a lot about prevention, what can you do as preventative measures? And that Smart 911 was recapped often, and it really did make a whole lot of sense. The importance of decriminalizing mental health and addiction. The team's focus is on getting customers and consumers involved and enrolled with the right type of services. And I think we're on that track with pre-trial. I think the pre-trial team is doing, helping the judges do a good job of that, which is exciting to know that we're on the cusp of that. Specific process and screening tools, I would say that that was one of my big takeaways, that I think we, as a community, can do a better job of collaborating and have better assessment tools so that we actually can accurately and more efficiently get people connected to the right service. They stress the importance of case management, and I think all along, throughout many of the conversations that we've had, case management is an obvious component of making sure that someone gets connected to the right service at the right time at the right place. And so obviously, with our teams having a lot of interaction between our CART team, we have a multifaceted team that gets together to review those releases, and it involves a number of different parties so that we make sure that, community-wide, we have those connections and network for people. And then the numerous programs that they've started in a short amount of time. Commissioner Benega noted where do they refer to. The list is long, and our folder is thick on the different programs and things that they have coordinated with, which is really exciting. And I actually, I would say Polk County should be incredibly proud of what they've accomplished in such a short amount of time. It was a true pleasure getting to meet them. They are all incredibly passionate people. So it was really, we were very embraced and very welcome, so it was really enjoyable. So simply, really, as we move forward in the stepping up initiative, we obviously have the development of the community triage, and we need to focus on, these kind of are the following things that we felt were so important. Supporting and encouraging the collaborative efforts that are already in place, as well as those that can be further developed. I think we all know that through a collaborative effort, we can do a much better lift, a much thorough, much more thorough lift. The need for data-driven solutions, that was a huge push for them. I think that as a county, we, I'll speak for the Human Services Department, we have kind of been behind that eight ball for a long time, and we now have the software that can actually produce some of that data. I think the collectives that are happening now with the data-driven justice and the grants that we've been awarded through MacArthur, we're going to do that. And actually, I think that data is going to help us tremendously in making our community better and best. And then finally, the involvement at all levels. The community, the city, the county, and the state. No one should be left out of that equation, because it needs all of us in order to make it work, not only programmatically but financially.
Thank you, Commissioner Heiberg.
I have a couple of comments. Thank you, Jill, for coming, and Carrie for giving the presentation. So just kind of an overview, this stuff has all come from NACO. NACO actually invited us to send two people to this stepping up initiative, and because of the involvement that we've had in NACO, Minnehaw County has been recognized for all the work they've been doing. And so some of these things are starting to come to the forefront. So NACO, which is National Association of Counties, actually paid for both Carrie and Jill to go to this conference. And this conference was written up in December's newsletter for, or paper from NACO. And so there was a nice short article, and that's what kind of triggered my mind again, that, oh, we need to have you girls come and talk about what happened there. But they can, we continue to get funding and grant opportunities because of our involvement in NACO, and it has been very beneficial to us. Another one I'll add that I don't know if the rest of the commission is aware of is that recently, we were given the opportunity to apply, to send, I believe it's two people, to the NACO conference to go to a breakout session on data-driven justice, which these gals were talking about. And so we're working on, we're not guaranteed those spots, but we get to at least submit a couple of names. Erin and I are both going to the NACO conference for the legislative conference, because they sit on a committee there nationally. And we will be a part of that data-driven, because since we were already attending, we were invited to attend that specific session. And so we will know by the end of January whether the people that we submit names for were actually paid for their travel to go to the specific data-driven justice. And if we get somebody to go, we'll obviously have them come back again and report on, on what we're doing. But NACO has really put a lot of money into Minnehaw County and along with giving us opportunities like the MacArthur Grant and some of the other work that's been happening. So thank you for going, and I'm glad it was as great as it, as it sounds like it was, because NACO is a great organization to help us put together some of these best practices.
Very much, thank you. Commissioner Barth?
Well, I do appreciate this presentation. It's always nice also to have the city come and visit us. So as regards to the involvement at all levels, the county, the city, the state, what is the state doing there in Iowa to support this?
The state has been really supportive in bringing forward, and maybe Commissioner Heiberg, she's quite involved as well, can best answer it. But I think that the county, the city, and the state have really joined forces and have really tried to bring in best practice. And they've been informed, they've been engaged. I'm not sure, I don't know that I can speak specifically about the funding portions of things. To be honest, they really didn't focus so much on that, but rather that it really became a collaborative. So how much comes exactly from who? I'm not exactly sure. But I will say that they were all, they all had had open dialogue and all were very open to being a part of that team. So I was impressed that they all were able to sit at the table and have ownership in that.
Madam Chair, that's great to hear. So did they tell us, tell you anything about other challenges that were unexpected now that they've gotten to this point? Because clearly, we're hoping to get to that point.
Right.
So what's ahead for them that they didn't anticipate?
I think their challenges obviously are the ongoing cost, right? It's the maintaining, it's not only creating, but then maintaining, funding and those sorts of things, keeping everybody at the table and engaged. I think they've done a great job of building the foundation, however, and I think that they have buy-in of all of those collaboratives, the county, city, and state. So I think when I look at where we are, I think we are really going down the right path. And with triage, we've been able to engulf a number of providers, vendors, service providers, and funders. And so I think our maintaining involvement and engagement will be critical for us, just as it is for Polk County.
Anything else? All right. Well, thank you so much. That was a very informative presentation. We appreciate it. So that takes us to item 16, liaison reports. No liaison reports this week? Okay. Next item is new business, and I believe Carrie might be giving us an update. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. Okay, so I just wanted to briefly provide you with an update in regards to the federal government shutdown. Obviously, as you well know, it's been incredibly impactful to many. Currently, there's approximately 800,000 federal employees that have been furloughed or that are working without pay. One of the biggest challenges that they've had is that even includes places like the National Weather Service, which I didn't even really think about, quite frankly. But their forecasters are currently working without pay. And so obviously, we know that weather is impactful to everyone. And so they're concerned that moving forward, how do they do that? And how do they keep having people come to the table without having salaries paid? The most impactful locally has been, one of the first one would be housing. HUD has been significantly hit through a lot of their supportive programs and the subsidies that they provide to individuals who either are elderly, disabled, those that are needing that support in regards to paying rent each month. I was able to visit with an individual from HUD. Fortunately, I was able to get ahold of him solely because he's a great guy, but he's not working. And so it really has been unclear as to what programs they're going to be cutting. And when I say cutting, not permanently, but at least trying to survive or provide some form of support to those that are receiving those or have been receiving those funds and assistance. They're hopeful that the shutdown will end soon, and those funds will resume. However, there's no guarantee of that, and as of this morning, I've not heard of any change. I will say that locally, a lot of the banks have stepped up, and they're offering no-interest loans to people so that they, for the mortgage folks, they can pay their mortgages and keep up to date and not go into foreclosure. We have talked to some of the local providers that can assist those who have received subsidies if their landlords are starting to look at evicting people because of lack of payment of rent. Obviously, that becomes a real challenge for us, and that would be very impactful to specifically Human Services Office. Obviously, we can't afford to have people homeless. And so we've really talked about how do we vet out some supportive services for them and some coaching for them so that they maintain housing and aren't improperly evicted either. Multiple shelters are at risk of closing. Locally, we're fortunate, we're blessed to have two shelters that are predominantly funded by other means, not saying that they don't receive grants. However, currently, I've not received any update that either one of our local shelters are looking at having any struggles in regards to receiving grant funding or government funding. Primarily, then, the other two, the other two items would be our supportive programs, so those that are the food or the SNAP programs for those that are receiving those benefits. As you may have heard, those benefits for February were released early. They should have, they should have received those actually February, or January 20th, and that was actually their February allotment. So our concern is, is that people will go out and spend that allotment thinking that it's an extra. It is not an extra. It's critical for people to understand that that is just an addition. They basically forwarded those funds in hopes of being able to support those that receive SNAP that have been now affected by the federal shutdown. We are supportive of food stamps. We went, I did call and visited with their director and noted that we certainly will do our part in getting that word out. So we've created some information at our office that supports the information providing to those that come into our office in regards to those benefits. When it comes to the food bank, I visited with them. They're looking at presenting to their board a plan of action on January 25th, so that's later this week. They're anticipating about 100% increase in distribution starting February 5th if the shutdown continues. I think there will continue to be trickle-down effects. I think that those that are behind are going to continue to be behind, because spending will have kind of gone out the roof of trying to cover, basically robbing Peter to pay Paul. And so it's going to be a challenge for us locally for individuals to get caught up. They're hopeful that the government will provide that income back. They'll do back pay from the time the shutdown started. However, that's not a guarantee. And so those that are receiving some of those benefits hopefully will be mindful that they're not extra. They're actually just handing those out early to get them through. TANF is the other, which is temporary assistance for needing, needing families. That supplement, it provides assistance to about 3.4 million people that receive TANF. And so it's significant in the fact that that assistance provides a number of families with children, extra assistance in regards to necessity items. And so currently, TANF, that has a little bit more wiggle room, because that is actually funded portionally by a state. Legally, the state is not obligated to continue TANF through the shutdown, but we have not heard from the state level that that's in question or in concern of being cut or diminished. So currently, we're okay. I would say the biggest concern in regards to those two, between SNAP and TANF, are going to be those type of, it will be that, I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry, I looked at my note. Those two primarily are funded through the state. I think the biggest issue will be that when they are reinstated, will they look the same? There is potential of having that narrowed. If the shutdown doesn't get called and they restart, I think that TANF would run into the, run into problems in regards to being continually funded. I think primarily, other than that, I think the biggest concern we had was the Medicaid and Medicare. Both of those programs are fully funded and will continue to be fully funded. They've been approved through the federal government, and so even those that receive CHIP, which is the insurance for children, that will continue as well. So there's no concern in that regard. So I think locally, the team has done an incredible job of formatting a group of people who have really come forward and are looking at wanting to support our community as best we can. The food distributions through churches have been huge, and they have continued to really step up their game and provide the necessity items that, that the families are desperately in search of.
All right. Is there any questions for Carrie?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Barth?
So Carrie, if, if someone in our area, in our region, who So Carrie, if someone in our area, in our region, who is currently not getting paid, you know, they must be feeling incredible stress, can they, who can they call? I mean, what can they do?
Sure.
And what about their mental health?
That's been a real challenge. I think locally, the providers have identified that there are some coaching through LSS and a couple other providers that they can call if they are running into some resource issues, especially with landlords, trying to figure out, how am I going to cover this expense, but I can't pay my rent? I think all of us have joined forces in trying to figure out how do we best cover those. We've visited with banks, banks have really come forward and trying to assist as well. Certainly, I would encourage anybody that has any of those questions and concerns, they certainly can call our office, and we will do our best to get them linked to the right service. And also, I believe contacting 211, they really have beefed up their support as well, and are trying to have staff that are knowledgeable and that are able to answer some of those questions. Mental health, I think that's something that obviously is the forefront for many people. They've even talked about children having those ill effects, going to school, obviously having heard conversations that parents are having in regards to, I don't know how we're going to pay this bill, what if we get evicted? So I think it's important for all providers in the community to really step up their game and be supportive and knowing, the school counselors knowing that they need to really come forward and offer that support to the kids, because I think that's probably going to be the biggest hit group.
Anyone else?
Well, thank you Carrie, I appreciate it. Carrie had done a nice job of sending us a memo at the end of last week, and I thought it'd be helpful just publicly to let people know that the county's working on it, I know the city's putting together resources, and, I mean, we do live in a great community where people, a lot of people are coming forward and trying to help, but I think there's just a lot of people, a lot more people impacted than we encounter in our daily lives. So I appreciate the work your offices do on. Thank you.
Is there anything, any other new business? Commissioner Heiburger?
One I'll mention is that today is the kickoff of the Sioux Empire Livestock Show, and the ribbon-cutting by the Chamber will be at the Expo Building today at 4:30, and that event, I believe, goes through Friday. So a lot of cows and sheep and pigs and goats will be coming to Sioux Falls, so take it in.
Yeah, if you've never been, it's a really fun event.
Yeah, it's a fun event.
It's a great anecdote for January, so.
Yes, that's right.
Anything else? Okay, any old business? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to recess the commission meeting for 10 minutes, and then we'll come back.
Moved.
Second? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, we'll reconvene in 10 minutes, at 10:40 about.